Live from the WKRG News 5 studio. You're watching the Mobile City Council Candidate Forum for District 3. Sponsored by Mobile United, the League of Women Voters, and AFC Mobile.
Hello everyone and welcome to tonight's City Council District 3 Forum. I'm Peter Albrecht. This is the fourth of seven City Council debates. We're bringing you to get you ready for Mobile's election on August 24th. Our City Council debates are sponsored by the League of Women Voters, Mobile United, and Mobile AFC are a great soccer team here in the city. District 3 encompasses most of Maysville in the DIP area and more. The candidates are arranged tonight alphabetically Xavier Karnreich and CJ Small. Here are the ground rules for tonight. The candidates do not know the questions in advance. They'll have up to one minute for their answers. There will be no rebuttals. We ask the candidates to answer the question that's being asked. We will rotate the order in which the candidates answer the questions. And then at the end of our forum tonight, each candidate will be allowed to make a one-minute closing statement. All right, we're going to begin with some topics pertinent to District 3. We'll begin with the downtown airport situation. The city moving ahead with plans to move the commercial airport from Batesfield to Brookly in District 3. This could add more airplane noise to your district. Do you favor moving the airport? Why or why not? And Xavier, you're first.
Um, yes, I do favor moving the airport because, um, well, from what I can understand, it'd be easier to access. As far as the noise goes, well, I mean, you do have an airport.
All right, CJ?
Yes, so thank you, Peter, for the invitation on this evening. There are some pros and cons with moving the airport down to Brookly Field. And I do favor moving the airport down in Brookly Field because it's so close to Dauphinada Parkway. The reason that is because what follows the airport would be more businesses such as hotels and rental cars. The noise complaints is what you, just the question that you ask is that the noise is regulated now by the federal. So therefore, the planes are now designed with less noise mechanism. And therefore, the runway will be going across Mobile Bay. And then that will make less noise into the community where many citizens have concerns about.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll go from planes to trains and talk about Amtrak. The city has promised $3 million to help bring Amtrak service back to the area. But Amtrak has reneged on a promise to conduct a study on what impact the use of the tracks would have on commercial rail service, especially near the port. So the question tonight is should Mobile subsidize the return of Amtrak service? CJ, you go first.
As long as all the agreements that was put up front has been made, Mobile should do. But all the agreements is not met upfront in what everybody said they was going to do. I don't believe that Mobile should go forward because if they renege on one thing, they will renege on two.
Okay, Xavier?
Yes, I think it will be good for tourism. But at the same time, like CJ was saying, if they don't keep their end of the bargain, then you know, we shouldn't work with them.
All right, very good. Our next question involves the waterfront. What would you like see done in District 3 to make the waterfront more accessible to the public? Xavier, you're first.
Ferry boats will be good. And just general being able to transport and get to the locations.
All right, CJ?
Yes, in the past couple of years, the city of Mobile have purchased two different properties. Recent, the city of Mobile had purchased that old Zabat property from malls. Back in the day, there used to be a beach called Hippie Beach off Dauphinada Parkway. Then after that, you know, malls took it over and had a sewage plant there. So the sewage plant was, is not there no more because of the hurricane. It'd been sitting there idle for years. So recently, the city had just purchased that property for access for water for the citizens of Mobile. And also earlier this year, a lot of part of last year, the city along with the state of Alabama had also purchased the old Brookly property, USA property in Brookly. So therefore, there is more water access for the citizens of Mobile. So between the old Zabat property and the old USA, the old USA property, the city have more access to water.
All right, thank you very much. Next question, what's your opinion of the state of public schools in District 3? And what if anything should the city be doing to work with the school system to make things better? CJ, you're first.
Currently, the schools, especially on Dauphinada Parkway, and I would go even say the ones in Maysville are really good. We have Givyard, we have Pillins, we have BC Rain, along with Craighead, and also Maryvale Elementary School. All those schools are doing wonderful in the community. The city should invest into, continue to invest into the public school system because again, those are our tomorrow. Those are our future workers here in the city of Mobile. So therefore, we need to go ahead and invest to make sure that we, make sure we have good workers in the years to come.
All right, Xavier?
Um, yeah, I think that our school system is doing pretty well in our area. Just we should continue to focus on those schools and help them teach our future and everything and you know, keep everything together.
All right. We're going to talk next about Ladd Stadium. Technically, I think in District 2, but close to District 3. South Alabama has moved out. The Senior Bowl's moved out. The Lending Tree could move out. The high schools are all getting on-campus stadiums. What do you think the future of Ladd is? What would you like to see it be? Xavier, you're first.
Well, I would like to see Ladd Stadium become a historic landmark. If we don't use it anymore, if everything just moves out, then I would like to see it become a historic landmark. It's been here for a long time and I used to live right around, a lot, right around the corner from itself.
All right, very good. CJ?
Yeah, Ladd Stadium is a historical landmark and we, the city, should more, invest more into it to draw more gains such as historical black colleges and universities. Also, the Ladd Board is currently trying to make it an entertaining venue just to have more than just football there. They want to have music concerts, you know, in the community. We need something that every community for the community can enjoy, especially in the Maysville area. Again, if you don't have anything in the community for citizens can enjoy, they will, they feel like they just left out. But if you have things in the community where citizens can enjoy and they can just walk to, you know, that'd be enjoyable things for the citizens in that particular area.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're going to go on and talk about crime and policing in the city. Mobile on pace this year to have the highest number of murders in more than a decade. Many of these crimes are being committed by teenagers. What can be done from a city standpoint to address this problem? CJ, you're first.
We have to continue to engage the citizens. This past couple of years, the Mobile City Council had, you know, put forth a, you know, citizen advisory committee. And that is very important for they can communicate between the citizens and also the police department. We have many citizens that do not have the trust, you know, 100% into the police department. So therefore, a middle man or a third person can help to bridge that gap. Doing that, you know, that will help to decrease crime because the citizens have a worry about where they can feel comfortable in talking to someone that is non-government and tell them exactly what's going on in the, in the community. Many times citizens turn their back and they're scared to say anything, but they have a third person they can go to and which is not government, they feel more comfortable reporting crimes and crimes will decrease.
All right, Xavier?
Yeah, I would say first of all, we need to focus on education, promote education a little bit more than we are. And it should help lower the crime rates because as long as everybody's going to school and focused on trying to get occupations and stuff, um, you know, give them less time to, you know, worry about crime.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you very much. Police body cameras is our next topic. Starting in 2015, Mobile purchased 500 of these cameras for officers. Yet earlier this year, there were two police shootings, deadly shootings, in neither case was an officer involved wearing a camera. Since that time, the city has purchased hundreds more in the name of transparency. And yet, Mobile Police in almost all circumstances will not make this video available to the public or to the media. What would you recommend that the rules be for body cameras and availability of the video? Xavier, you're first.
Um, I think that we should all, that the police officers should wear body cams and they should be on at all times. And yeah, when there's something going on that they, that the video needs to be seen, they should go ahead and release that.
Thank you. CJ?
Unless it's extremely graphic, I believe that the video should be released. Again, we have to realize as government how those body cameras was purchased. And it was purchased through taxpayers' money. So therefore, if that was to go ahead and cool down the taxpayers and the citizens in the community, just showing a video to see as like what had happened, I believe that we, the government should release those videos.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next topic is annexation. Two years ago, for the first time ever, the city council voted against allowing a group of people, in this case about 13,000 people living west of the city, to vote on annexing into Mobile. The majority of those residents are white. The vote against annexation was on racial lines. Do you favor annexation? CJ, you're first.
Yes, at the appropriate time. I have to represent the citizens of District 3. And many times citizens of District 3 feel like they are left behind because of the lack of streets, the condition of them, the parks, the condition of the parks, the condition of many infrastructure issues that's around District 3. Many citizens in District 3, especially east side of Mobile, feel like that all the attention is taken, you know, towards the west side of Mobile. So therefore, I have to show the citizens of District 3 why I voted for annexation. And believing in four meetings just to say, you know, I voted for annexation, they still left behind, were not receiving no type of hope for tomorrow that their infrastructure and their parts and their streets would get better, that was hard for me to cast a vote. Within the past couple of years, the city has invested a lot into the district. So therefore, it gave me a little more lead room to vote for annexation, which I do believe that the city do needs to grow.
Okay, thank you much, very much. CJ, Xavier, your thoughts on annexation?
Yeah, I would agree with it, but it has to be for the right reasons. Again, as far as I'm concerned, if it's for revenue purposes, then yes. If it's just for expanding, just to add more people, well, we could, you know, we have enough problems already in the city. So we wouldn't want to add extra people that need to have extra services when we can't afford it.
Okay, thank you. Next topic is the supermajority. Mobile's government has set up so that a supermajority, five of seven votes, are required to pass most city council business. The system was established to protect African-American rights with four of seven districts being majority white. After this next census, however, when the districts are redrawn, we could have four districts that would be majority black. If so, should the supermajority remain in place? Xavier, you're first.
Um, I kind of disagree with keeping it in place, but if it's for the better, then I guess so.
Okay, CJ?
Yes, we should keep the supermajority in place. And the reason why is they bring everyone to the table to make sure to negotiate. If we do not negotiate and it's just always, you know, fair on one side, then the other side would not have the opportunity. And who knows when the census, you know, comes, you know, it could flip. It could be majority white. So therefore, you know, we, supermajority bring us to the table to negotiate, to talk about things and not just let things just be one-sided and we'll just be equal.
Okay, thank you very much. Next question involves inclusion and diversity. Has the current administration done an adequate job of representing the diversity of the city in its appointed position? CJ, you're first.
At first, I would say no. In the recent years, in this past term, I would say yes. The administration have been trying to make sure that the, it is diversified. The law states that the administration should, you know, look like the makeup of the city. I mean, that's just, that's the state law. And at first, in the first term of the current administration, it was not. But the second term is, it's kind of going that way. And I believe that, you know, this current administration will try to continue down that path.
All right, very good. Xavier?
Yeah, I think they're doing a pretty good job.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to talk now about your favorite historic figure. Mobilians over more than 300 years have made their mark in a number of fields like medicine, aerospace, sports, and entertainment. Who is your favorite Mobilian of all time and why do you admire them? Xavier, you're first.
I'd have to pick Councilman Fred Richardson. He's been on council for 20 something years and I think he has done a good job and I think he's a good role model for us.
Okay, CJ?
I would say Senator Figgers, the late Michael Senator Figgers. I respect him a lot. Didn't have an opportunity, you know, not to meet him, didn't meet him. But I heard so much great things about him and especially the current law that Mobile is under. He was one of the lead, you know, ones that was leading that particular law that makes, you know, African-Americans have a voice at the table. I have several other ones, but the one that's on top of my head would be the late Michael Figgers.
Thank you very much. Next question involves the mayor's race. Who will you vote for for mayor? Who are you endorsing and why? CJ, you're first.
That is a hard question. All three of the, three of the candidates are close friends, one even is, you know, my attorney. And I have not endorsed neither one and, and I have not really made up my mind.
Okay, Xavier?
Yeah, I'm going to be voting for Fred Richardson. He's been on, again, like I said, he's been on the council for over 20 something years and I think he has the best experience for our city. And I think he'd be good new leadership for us.
Thank you very much. All right, next question involves COVID-19. Have you been vaccinated for COVID-19? If so, or if not, why? And how do you think the city really has responded to the pandemic over the last year and a half? Xavier, you're first.
I haven't been vaccinated yet, but I'm still weighing my options and more than likely I will though.
Okay, and CJ?
Yes, I have been vaccinated. The city as a government has really had done well in trying to get the information out to the citizens of Mobile by even, you know, trying to subsidize, you know, barber shops and beauty shops, you know, and try to make, you know, vaccines available and also the COVID tests available to the, you know, citizens of Mobile. So if I had to give a grade, I would give the government of Mobile an A.
All right, thank you. This next question is also related to COVID. It's about the city pay raise for employees during the pandemic. No city employee missed a paycheck. Mayor Stimson is proposing giving city employees a $5,000 bonus out of the city's CARES Act money. That's the federal COVID money. Do you agree with that or do you think the fund should go to others more impacted by the pandemic, say business owners who may have lost their business or people who lost their jobs? CJ, you're first.
Yeah, if you look at the current budget, there are some money that is going towards small businesses. But I do agree, given the employees, their extra bonus. Again, you know, they had to sacrifice, you know, still meeting with, you know, some of the public and especially officers and the firefighters and the public works. And then they had to, you know, meet with the public, then go home and, you know, jeopardize and taking the virus back home to their families. So therefore, I think that we should reward our first responders, our public workers and our city workers for, you know, coming to work. Because some, you know, so many people, you know, did not have the opportunity to just say, hey, I have a choice to go to work, I do not have a choice to go to work. But with them coming to work every day and, you know, smiling and making sure that the city has moved forward, I think we should reward them.
All right, Xavier, your thoughts on the city pay raise?
Yeah, I believe that these first responders and everybody should get a pay raise as far as the bonus goes. That should go to, you know, those businesses and stuff. But as far as our first responders and those that did not have to not work during the pandemic, I think they, I think they deserve a raise.
Okay, thank you very much. The current administration, as we keep talking about city finances here, has built up a surplus of tens of millions of dollars over the last eight years. How do you balance the need for a rainy day fund with spending money that's being collected now from taxpayers now for current needs? Xavier, you're first.
I would say keep the, keep that what we already have as surplus, keep that for the rainy day and use the other funds for the stuff that we need done.
All right, CJ? I'm sorry to interrupt. Were you done Xavier? Okay, CJ?
Yes, we sure have a rainy day account established. And, you know, today we are at a good financial sound with the city of Mobile, you know, versus other cities, you know, throughout America. We do have some issues in certain parts of the city where we do need to address. And I would not just say, you know, there's this pat, pat, pat money, but we need to take some of that money. I would just say probably 5 to 10% of it and putting it to areas, you know, throughout the city that is, you know, that is needed. But again, we do need a rainy day fund.
All right, thank you very much. I was talking about the CIP or the Capital Improvement Plan. It uses money from the penny sales tax, divides it evenly or a portion of it evenly among the seven districts for infrastructure projects. Is this fair to the older parts of the city? What changes, if any, would you make to this plan? CJ, you're first.
Yes, I am one of the sponsors for the CIP that really had came up with the CIP program. And it has been a blessing for the city of Mobile. You know, the question is, is $3 million fair enough across the board? And according to state law, you know, money needs to be evenly divided. And just as well, so we have a rainy day fund where we probably can just pinch off a little bit, I believe that the mayor has the authorization to go ahead and put some of those funds where it's needed, especially on the east side of Mobile.
All right, Xavier?
Well, yeah, I, um, yeah, I think that that's a good idea.
All right, thank you so much. Staying on the topic of the CIP, let's talk about your district priorities for the CIP money for these infrastructure plans. Xavier, you're first.
Transportation for number one and try to speed up some of the constructions on some of the roads we have that we already have been working on, some that's been lasting for years and stuff. Go ahead and try to pay those off and get it done.
All right, CJ?
Yeah, the CIP money can only be spent on capital projects that is within the district. And so therefore, the first round of CIP I received was to redo, redid Anne Street. The second, you know, round I received was to redo Baltimore Street. And so lately, you know, I've been focusing a lot on parks that has been really neglected throughout the years because of the lack of funding in the district. District 3 has the second most parks in the city. We have like a 12 parks. And so taking $3 million is, you know, is not, you know, almost like chunk change, you know, between 12 parks. But that was exactly what I would do is continue to do the parks, continue to do different streets throughout the district.
All right, you read our mind here CJ with our next question. It involves parks. Does Mobile have enough of them? Are they properly equipped? Are they properly maintained? And how about in District 3? CJ, you're first.
Yes, again, the parks has been neglected for several years, again, because of lack of funding. And thank God for the CIP. Majority of the parks have been, have been touched and we are going to continue to touch on those parks in the next four years.
All right, Xavier, what do you think about parks in general and parks in District 3?
Well, yeah, I think our parks could use a little more, a little facelift. We could add some more, do not reactivate our pools and stuff for like in the summers and things like that. But other than that, yeah.
All righty. Next question involves litter in the city. It's a problem citywide. What can be done about it? How big a priority should this be? Xavier, you're first.
Well, the littering problem is kind of a tough one, but we just need to encourage people to use the bins that we put out and just show that, you know, just do our, do our best to keep the city clean.
Okay, CJ?
Yeah, we need to continue a great litter campaign, not only just in the district, but throughout the city of Mobile. We have several, you know, bays of water. We have Dog River. We have Mobile Bay. We have Three Mile Creek. We have different water sheds throughout the area. And again, when we have citizens that come throughout, you know, in the city of Mobile and they see trash, you know, just flowing, it's not a great look. But if you have a citizen that come through Mobile and see how beautiful it is and litter free, we can gain more attraction of visitors in the city.
All right, thank you. Let's talk about the Bayway Bridge project. What should the city's role be in the construction of this new Mobile River Bridge in Bayway? CJ, you go first.
The city role should be the biggest cheerleader for it. Because when people come through Mobile on I-10 and they be backed up in that traffic, you know, past Michigan Avenue, you know, they're not going to say the state of Alabama. They're not going to say Baldwin County. They're not going to say Mobile County. They're going to say, you know, Mobile, that's a hard place to travel. You got to wait, they got to wait. So the city should be a cheerleader, you know, cheerleading towards the state of Alabama for money, cheerleading towards, you know, Congress, you know, the federal for money. We should be the biggest cheerleader than anybody else.
Okay, Xavier?
Yeah, I think that we should support the Bayway Bridge as long as, you know, you don't told the tunnels that we have going that way. Other than that, yeah.
All righty. Next question involves an occupational tax. For the last 15 years, the city of Mobile has invested more than $200 million in economic development projects, yet a majority of workers at Airbus, Ostell, and the steel mills live in Baldwin County. Some say that Baldwin is booming off the back of Mobile. Should there be an occupational tax? The city of Birmingham has done this, for example, to try to recoup some of this investment. Xavier, you're first.
Yes, I do agree with the occupational tax for those who live outside the city yet work here. Because it's better for them to put money back into the city where they're getting the money from.
Okay, CJ?
Yes, that was a discussion that we had discussed a couple of weeks ago in city council meeting. And from my knowledge, what we had got from the attorneys is that there is a state law that prohibit Mobile for applying, you know, for occupational tax. I believe that we should talk to our local delegation to see that, you know, by doing a study about trying to do an occupational tax. Because again, a lot of people are moving, are getting jobs here in Mobile, but they're moving to Baldwin County.
All right, thank you so much. Next question, should the, what should the role be of the city in financially supporting entertainment and sports events like college bowl games and classics, the moon pie drop, or an event like Bay Fest that no longer exists? CJ, you're first.
Fun bring money. If you having fun, the families having fun, they are spending money. You know, Saturdays you go to Chuck E. Cheese before the pandemic. It used to be packed every Friday, Saturday, Sunday because they are, you know, fun. You know, where there's fun, people gonna have a good time, just like the casinos. Many adults go to the casinos to have fun and they spending money. You know, so if people are having fun, they're going to spend money. And I think that Mobile should lead the way and let citizens having fun for they can spend some money.
All right, Xavier?
Yes, I do agree that we should support having city-sponsored events because, yes, like CJ says, it does bring money to our city.
All right, thank you. Talking about bringing people to the city, tourism, the city supports Visit Mobile to the tune of about $2.7 million a year. COVID threatens the future of the convention and meetings industry. What should the city's focus be when it comes to tourism? Xavier, you're first.
Just try to make it, because of the pandemic, just try to make it safe, but, you know, continue as we were and add more activities to these buildings and things like that.
All right, CJ?
We have a treasure here in Mobile. And pretty much I say Mobile all the time is a, you know, well-kept secret. You know, many people don't know that, you know, Mardi Gras is the birthplace right here in Mobile. And we know that Mardi Gras is one of our biggest economic, you know, boomers here, you know, in the city. And therefore, we also have another treasure here that we trying to wake up, which is Africatown, where the last slave ship was founded. And long we put money behind the tourism and especially Africatown, where we can say this is where the last ship has landed, that would bring all types of people into the city of Mobile, just like in Montgomery. In Montgomery, they have the Lynch Museum. And it's not, you know, the real thing, but you have people all across America going to Montgomery just to view this. But we had a real thing right here. And Mobile should lead the front way, not just only pushing Africatown where the last slave ship had, was, you know, ended. But we should also push, you know, our water, which is the Bayway, the Dog River, and also Mardi Gras and different bowl games.
All right. Next question involves Golf Quest. The city spent about $43 million. It has not been a success. It is a world-class facility, no doubt, but it has not gone over well with the public. What should the city do with this property? Keeping in mind, there are some restrictions owing to the use of federal transportation funds. CJ, you're first.
Yes, a couple of weeks ago, Representative Barbara Drummond and myself had hosted a chat and chew where we invited seniors, you know, in our district down to Golf Quest. And we had lunch on the river. And it was one of the most beautiful things, you know, that the citizens, those seniors could have enjoyed, you know, especially, you know, during this pandemic. And just the view was just beautiful. I believe that we should really talk to the legislators and try to push, you know, casinos here into Mobile, not saying that I'm a gambler. But, you know, we have many citizens leaving Mobile, going over to Mississippi, spending their money. And we have a beautiful facility that we can use there for gambling.
As long as, you know, Alabama passed the gambling law, we can have a beautiful casino right there, you know, in the city of Mobile, showing our beautiful waterway and while gambling, and also having dinner and entertainment.
All right, Xavier, your thoughts on Gulf Quest?
Well, I think Gulf Quest, the Gulf Quest Museum could be used for a transportation hub, you know, for boats and ferries, and also the Amtrak, if you could use it for such things. But, yeah, I think it should be used for transportation. It'll help bring our tourists.
All right, thank you. Next topic is the Civic Center, as we stay downtown with our topics here. When Mayor Stimson came in eight years ago, he said the Civic Center was obsolete. It couldn't be renovated in a financially viable way. It was a drain on the city's finances. But that facility remains open, hosting few events outside of Mardi Gras. What do you see as the future of the Civic Center? And if you think it should be torn down, what would you like to see happen to the property? Xavier, you're first.
I don't think it should be torn down. I think we should keep it here and just find other purposes for it.
All right, CJ.
The Civic Center, many people, many Mobilians love it, that particular center. You know, you have Mardi Gras groups, and you have non-Mardi Gras groups that really love, you know, the Civic Center. I believe that we need to bring the people, the citizens of Mobile, to the table and see exactly, you know, what they want, and just give them several options to choose from.
All righty. Next question, CJ, you go first on this one. What is the biggest issue facing the city of Mobile? Why do you think so? What can be done about it?
Infrastructure is the biggest issue, and blight is, I guess I named two things. But I'm just going to focus on blight in District 3. District 3 is, you know, of course, is one of the oldest, you know, areas in the city of Mobile, where many people had grew up, you know, lived, and even passed away. And you have so many houses that's there, that's air property, where the residents of the family members are out of town, and they're not, you know, thinking two or three times about the property here in Mobile. So therefore, you know, we need more of the city workers to go out and to identify these homes and these overgrown lots to make sure that they are known, for we can contact those property owners. And if they do not want them, if it's air property, we need to move to the next step to find someone who will take care of them, to make our community much better than what it is today.
All right, thanks CJ. Xavier.
Yeah, I think our crime could be worked on a little bit. I mean, it's not, it's so bad, but it is a good issue that could be, you know, worked on.
All right, thank you. What's the biggest problem, biggest issue facing your district, District 3? Xavier, you go first.
From what I can understand, it's more of the transportation problem with the bus system. And their need to go back to the way they used to be before the pandemic, you know.
All right, CJ, biggest issue in District 3?
And again, it's blight. Infrastructure, we are working on at present, but again, it's blight. And many citizens do not know they need to dial 311 when they see an overgrown lot has started growing, especially that particular property that has been vacant for years. We have a issue, again, with the properties being air property. And then we have another issue where a lot of realtors that really don't care about the city of Mobile own these particular homes and just letting them dilute. You know, blight bring about crime. Crime is built where blight is. So if we get rid of the blight, we can pretty much get rid of the crime.
All right, well, it's time now for our closing statements already. Each candidate will have one minute to make their closing remarks. We flipped a coin to see the order here, and we decided that, Xavier, you're first with your closing statement.
Well, all I want to say is that I am new to politics, so, you know, but I am here to serve the people. And just vote for Xavier Karnreich, for Councilman.
All right, yes, sir. CJ.
And again, I'd like to thank you, Peter and WKRG, the League of Women Voters, for inviting us out, and all the sponsors for inviting us out on this evening. I served as Councilman of District 3 for the past eight and a half years. I was appointed in 2012, I ran in '13, and I also ran in 2017. And I have accomplished many things, you know, while I have been on the Mobile City Council representing District 3. And in the next four years, my plans only is to continue with great progress into the city, you know, and just not just in the city, but especially in District 3. Again, where we said that we had purchased, you know, different waterfront properties, we going to make use of it. We have money set aside to go to different parks throughout the area and streets, you know, in our area. And again, my focus is on to make District 3 a better place where things are happening.
All right, thanks so much. Thanks so much to Xavier Karnreich and to CJ Small. Thanks to the League of Women Voters, Mobile United, and AFC Mobile for sponsoring tonight's city council forum. Now, next Monday, we'll do it all again at 7:00 with District 5, followed by District 6 on Tuesday, and District 7 on Wednesday. And then a week from Monday, we'll have our mayoral forum. You can watch that on WKRG. All of our forums will be archived on our website, wkrG.com, so you can go back and watch them again. Thanks for watching, everyone, and have a great night.